Just a short night by now.
You good, Sue?
Oh, sure.
Well, good morning. Like to call the meeting to order. Roll call, please, Mrs. Harrington.
Mr. Bennington?
Here.
Mrs. Downs?
Here.
Mrs. Eubank?
Here.
Ms. Larmour?
Here.
Mr. Fulman?
Here. And could you please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
The Pledge of Allegiance.
At this point, we'll take a motion to adopt the proposed agenda.
So moved.
Check it.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Bennington?
Yes.
Ms. Larmour?
Yes.
Mrs. Eubank?
Yes.
Mrs. Downs?
Yes.
Mr. Fulman?
Yes. And now we have the superintendent's report. Mr. Hoster?
Yep, good morning. I have two items on the agenda for the superintendent's report. And if it's all right, I've folded them into one presentation. So we'll cover both of these topics, but it's just going to be one presentation. So it's all self-contained. So with that, let me pull up the presentation. So we wanted to provide an update on our normal COVID update in terms of what's happening in the district and the numbers. We also wanted to give an update on vaccines and the plans. There's been a lot of conversation in the community about that. We also wanted to spend a little bit of time talking and answering questions that we've gotten about quarantines and things of that nature. So we're going to spend a little bit of time with that. And we'll talk about the end of the year and how we want to approach the rest of the school year. Because this is the month that we talked about back in November and December that we would begin to have these conversations. So with that, we'll jump right in. This is the most recent update from Wood County. It's broken down by zip codes, active cases. And you can see that Perrysburg is at ninety-one to ninety-five active cases last week. So compared to the week before, it's down from ninety-six to a hundred. And the next slide I wanted to share just kind of historical because we lose sight of what does this mean. So going back to November fourth, you can see that we had sixty-six to seventy active cases back on November fourth. And if you recall, that's when we made the decision to move the junior high into four days a week. And things were moving along very well. And you can see from that time, November twenty-fifth, December second, and then January sixth, that period, things really spiked in terms of the number of cases. Not in the district necessarily, but in the community. But certainly, we are a reflection of the community. But the good news is from January sixth, which is the high point for the second semester, where we had a hundred and seventy-one to a hundred and seventy-six active cases, we are now down to ninety-one, ninety-five. So we're trending in the right direction. So that's good news. So this is something that we're excited to see. As of this week, we have all students are back in face-to-face instruction in the hybrid schedule. So we have the current model at grades in preschool through fourth grade that we've been with throughout the year. And that is four days a week of instruction. In grades five through twelve, are in the forty-sixty hybrid in-person model. And for seven through twelve, that's where we've been for most of the first semester. In HPI, we made that adjustment as we came back from break. So our internal numbers were still catching up from break and getting into kind of the routine of contact tracing and things settling in. As you recall, the first week, we had K-12 was all remote. So our data, we really didn't have a hands-on recording of what was happening in the district because the students weren't in the district. They were learning remotely. And then the second week, we didn't have the secondary kids back in session. So the numbers are now starting to fill in. And you can see that there's been some, you know, slight increases and a few decreases across the board. Well, one decrease. And overall, the number of folks traced is ranging about 2.8% of our total population. So we started this last semester. It's the real feel. Because when you do a weekly snapshot, it doesn't really capture the fact that when students and staff have to, who are, who have COVID, have to sit out for a minimum of ten days. Or if they're quarantined, it's fourteen days. So the real feel is just simply taking a two-week snapshot of numbers. And you can see that for staff, about 1.2% of our staff is currently isolated, which means they have COVID. Our student population is less than 1% at this time that have COVID. And then you can see with quarantine, they're running pretty close to each other, staff and students, 3.4%. Under 1% for symptoms. And then the number, when you add them all out as to how many are out, it's about 5% for staff and 5% for students. So what's the reference to that when you hear something like that? Is that high or is that low? So I included this going back to November sixteenth. And again, going back to where the community was early November, very low. And then we saw it start to inch up. So I wanted just to give it a reference point. But November sixteenth, we were at 7.7 and 6.5% totally out for quarantine and isolation. And then you can see December first, we were at 15% and 10%. And that's when the board made the decisions that it did in terms of going remote. I mean, when we had 10% of our staff out and 15% of our students, things were happening. But today, we're at 5% in students and 5% in employees, which is lower than we've seen since November. So again, things are trending in a positive way. Since November, I want to transition to talk about quarantine protocols that are in school. And we've gotten a lot of parent and family questions about this. So I wanted to spend just a little bit of time on this to clarify a few things. We'll sometimes get phone calls. And things have gotten kind of interesting with this. Because at the very beginning, the CDC, the Ohio Department of Health, everybody lined up and said, "This is how you approach isolation, and this is how you approach quarantine." And it was fourteen days, and this was the standard, and six feet, and this and that. And then you saw over the summer, well, there were some changes when it came to athletics with sports and how they were going to do things. And then we started to get into essential employees in terms of how they were going to be quarantined. And then slowly, that transitioned into the governor over break saying, you know, "Students won't have to quarantine if they're in a mask in a classroom. And then we're going to follow the American Academy of Pediatrics standards, which is three foot and six foot." So all of a sudden, in a very short span, we saw different messages coming out about quarantine. And if you're a parent at home and you're keeping score, you're hearing, "Well, you can do ten days under certain situations. You could be an essential employee and not have any days being in quarantine, and then you have fourteen days." So what is it? And we had a lot of questions in terms of, "Well, what is it?" in Perrysburg. We had a lot of questions posed to, "Well, why doesn't the board do this instead of that?", which is a fair question. And that led to conversations with other counties. And we talked about this at previous board meetings where some counties are interpreting that information differently than other counties. So if you have family down in the Cincinnati area, and you have a county there that is approaching quarantine this way, it could be very different than what we're doing here in Northwest Ohio and Wood County. So let's begin at the top. In the Ohio Revised Code, there's two sections of law. The Ohio Revised Code is all the laws that govern Ohio. And there are two sections of law that give the Department of Health exclusive powers in terms of setting quarantine guidelines. So here, I highlighted "The ultimate authority in matters of quarantine and isolation, which it may declare and enforce when neither exists and modify, relax, or abolish." So the Department of Health is the sole arbitrator when it comes to what quarantine is going to be. So the Wood County Department of Health determines that, what will quarantines be? So the folks that are calling and questioning, saying, "Why doesn't the board do it this way or that way?" So one of the answers is the boards of education, or city councils, or township trustees, do not have the authority to determine what quarantines will be. Now, if the health department sets up different options, like a central worker, then it could be up to an employer to determine that person, but they have to follow those guidelines. So boards can choose within the approved quarantine guidelines that are established. But they can't go out on their own and determine, "Well, we're going to follow what is happening down in Montgomery County and apply that here." So we have to follow the rules and guidelines that are here. The second section of the Ohio Revised Code gives the Board of Health, restrict persons to their place of residence or suitable place. They can prohibit entrance or exit to such places unless they say so when it comes to quarantines. I'm not going to read all those sections. But essentially, it gives the board the ability to tell people to stay home. So some people have said, "Well, you don't have to follow the board, the health, you know, the health board. But you can just do your own thing." So why doesn't Perrysburg just ignore the health department and allow students to come in who should be quarantining? And actually, the health department could, by law, have something to say about that in restricting their access or closing us down to prevent that congregation. So the laws are pretty clear in terms of what, who has that responsibility. So we've gotten a lot of calls about, "Well, the board can do this. Who has the authority? Who doesn't?" You know, the question I've asked folks is, "Well, I found two, in the Ohio Revised Code, two sections that speak to this directly and give one entity that authority. Please find me where it gives school boards the authority to do that." And it's not there. So what does that mean to us in Wood County? So we have a great working relationship with the Wood County Health Department. They ask for input. Perrysburg is not the only school district in Wood County. So with the input from other school districts and private schools and religious schools, they have sat down with us and gone over significant amount of information and asked for feedback. And ultimately, they make the decisions that are best for our community, and we're supportive of that. But this is a letter dated December sixth. And this is when we started to get into the ten days. And if you do ten days of quarantine, and if you can come back into these certain circumstances, and you can isolate that student, then they can come back after ten days. And so when the Wood County Health Department looked at that, they issued this letter. And it said, "Due to the challenges of consistency of meeting these requirements at all times within the student body, we continue to require a fourteen-day quarantine for students." So a couple of key things is, and we talked about this last time, where for us to do those kinds of things that are permissible when you look at the restrictions, and literally, it is making a student six feet apart from any other of their classmates at all times. So that means a student wouldn't be able to ride the bus because you have to pass by students and sit down. In the classroom, it would be challenging to keep a student six feet away from the others at all times. And the key is "at all times." So if that student has to get up to sharpen their pencil, we have to clear the room so that student has a six-foot path to get to the pencil sharpener. If you're going to follow what exactly it says, now, some people don't apply that standard. We can't control that. But in our county, the standard is, "This is what it says, and you have to follow that." So we certainly respect that. The next piece of guidance, this is after the first of the year. And this gets into the American Academy of Pediatric Standards. And how is the health department going to look at quarantining within schools? So they issued guidance that their contact tracers and school officials need to follow. And I highlighted a few sections of this. And it said, "Social distancing was maintained. Ideally, no less than three feet in elementary settings. Additionally, for close contacts, be able to attend in school must ensure certain criteria." So what they're saying here is they are following that three-foot in elementary, six-foot in the secondary level, just like what we highlighted. So on the next page, it really breaks it down to, you know, in the classroom, elementary students, three feet, ideally, six feet. Middle school and high school, when the classroom on school transportation, close contacts, must be at least six feet. So the idea that there are options, that the board is choosing to do this or to do that, we really have to remind folks that there are laws that give the health department authority to outline what it is. And then they issued these guidances for us that we have to follow. It's not an option. They're saying, "This is what you need to do." So I think it's important for us to keep that in mind. Because I've had parents who've reached out to me to say, "You know, why are you choosing to do that?" "Well, we're choosing to follow the guidelines," which is usually a good thing to do when it comes to public health and safety. If the health department changes those guidelines or offers a lesser of two, we'll explore that. Because we always have the right to stick with six feet for elementary and everybody, and we're not doing that. So when the health department has moved, we've supported that, and we've moved with them. So I suspect that in the next months, there'll be further discussion about this and across the state. And there might be some different challenges that will be coming as staff gets vaccinated. And are these standards still applicable for staff and so forth? So I wanted to take a little bit of time with that. Because, you know, I took a call from a parent who said, "Can you tell me what school doesn't quarantine? Because we're interested in that school." And I'm like, "I can't. I can tell you in Wood County what schools are supposed to do, what they're required to do." And I can't answer for Huron County, or Sandusky County, or Lucas County for that matter. So it doesn't work that way where we're imposing these standards. How they're being imposed at each district, I can't speak to that either. But I know how we're doing it, and we're following the guidelines. So I wanted to spend a little bit of time with that piece. Moving on to the vaccination update. Since the last time that we were together, the governor did roll out the school personnel vaccination plan. So we're very grateful that the governor has said, you know, "Let's make sure that we're getting all the school personnel vaccinated so that we can get back into more face-to-face instruction." So about a third of the school districts, schools in Ohio are remote. And the goal is to move them into some type of hybrid or face-to-face. And for those that are in hybrid, the idea is to get students, you know, more face-to-face instruction. And that has always been our goal in Perrysburg. So what they laid out is they had, Week One has happened. And I have on the screen those counties in Week One, and then Week Two, Three, and Four. So Perrysburg falls into Week Three, which is, you know, next, it would be February nineteenth is our date. And I'll flip to how that'll break down. But one of the things I wanted to point out are the schools, are the counties that are in blue are kind of our neighboring schools. So you get a feel for where our neighbors are lining, and, you know, we're kind of in the middle. So we have Lucas, Huron, and Williams County will be vaccinated. They're up next in Week Two. And then, of course, Wood, Ottawa, Henry Counties are here in Week Three. And then Week Four, Defiance, Erie, Fulton, Hancock, Sandusky, Seneca. And no offense to any neighboring counties that I might have left off, but those are the ones that I, you know, picked out here for this. So it gives you an idea. What we're hearing is the Ohio Department of Health, it gets all the vaccines from the feds. They don't know in advance how many they're going to get. So the goal is that they get all of these counties done at one time in one week. If the doses are there, they will move forward with that. But there's chances that the doses may not meet that number, and it could go into the second week. So we don't know until that week. So we won't know until probably late next week, where, you know, how that's going to flow, or even later into the week of. So for us here in Wood County, the health department sat down. I think all of the county schools, including Perrysburg, identified their partner being Wood County Health Department. What that means is, when the State of Ohio gets the vaccines, they will then move those to Wood County Health Department. So Perrysburg's vaccines will be with the Wood County Health Department. From that point, there are partners with the Wood County Health Department who will be doing the vaccines. So Wood County Health Department has a team that will be doing this. But they have also contacted or contracted with other entities. You've heard like Myers, or Kroger, there are some pharmacies that also can administer it. So they may be pulled in to help out with this. Here at Perrysburg, we're very fortunate. We have a great relationship and partnership with Mercy Health. And the folks at Mercy said, "We'd like to, you know, we'd like to help out with Wood County. Can we serve the Perrysburg community?" So their team will be the ones administering the vaccine for us. So in looking at when the vaccines arrive, which is usually early in a week, that they know the vaccines are there, and the number of teams that have to go out to administer the vaccines, there was a conversation about when does it make sense to administer the vaccines? And through the county, the February, the Friday, February nineteenth, was the date that everybody determined met everyone's needs the best. That includes the schools, that includes the health department, and that includes all of those providers. Because they're not, Mercy Health is not waiting for this one day. They're out there with this team vaccinating. They're working with Toledo Public right now. They have schedules and availability, you know, throughout the region. And so they're looking at their calendar ahead, saying, "Okay, these are the dates that we could help." So we don't know what type of vaccine we will get because the vaccines that are available need a second dose. So if it's Pfizer, we know that three weeks, which would be March twelfth, we would have to be back to administer a second dose. And if it's Moderna, we'd have to be back in four weeks. So we won't know that until the week of, that this will happen, you know, with the second dose. So the planning and effort that goes into the first, administering the first dose will then have to be applied to the second dose. We've had a couple of questions that have come up with, "Well, why not flip remote Mondays? You know, have that Friday be a remote Friday and have school on Monday and shift?" And, you know, for secondary students and families, that's a pretty easy thing. Whether it's Friday or Monday, it's really no matter because those students are independent. They can be home. They can do whatever they need to do. They just have to remember what day to show up for school. But for the few thousand elementary families, we hear from them when we talk about changes. And they have secured childcare, babysitters for every Monday that we have been remote. So to change that, and this is really short notice, that we just found out this, you know, a couple of weeks ahead, it's short notice for them, and that can be disruptive for them. The other piece of this, as you know, is, you know, employees have individual contracts. So when we talk about support staff, bus drivers, monitors, paraprofessionals, kitchen staff, just to name a few, they have Monday specified as non-workdays. So we changed a remote day. If you recall, back in November, we started that conversation probably six weeks ahead of that time so that we could get an agreement to make that switch happen. And when we did that, it only affected two of our schools, not all of them. So part of the concern is a lot of our staff, because they've lost income with the Mondays. Not working every Monday, it's had a financial impact on them. So many have taken a job and work on Mondays somewhere outside the district. So another concern of ours is, one, getting an agreement to shift that day with those employees and their contract. The second piece of that is, we have folks that have made commitments with other employers that may say, "I can't come in. You're changing this on me, and I might not be able to show up to do the job on Friday." You know, or Monday, I should say, if you're going to have school on Monday. "Because I have a commitment with my other employer." So we're not sure if we could fully staff everybody we needed if we made that agreement across the district. There's a lot of places that, you know, a single school, a private school that has 600 students in one building, or a smaller district can maybe make those adjustments more quickly. You know, we have eight buildings. We have fifty-five, fifty-six hundred students. We have close to 700 employees. It's hard to make those kind of adjustments on the fly in all those families. So that's a good question, and, you know, we thought of it. We talk about it. We try to make those adjustments. But what helps one situation out sometimes undoes situations for many other people. So we'll make those few that say, "Why don't you do this" happy. But then we will be hearing from those folks that are saying, "Wait a minute. I've had this arrangement set up all year, and now you've changed it, and now you're causing me hardship." Again, it comes back to flexibility and just being patient, and we're doing the best we can. I explained to somebody, and I think I shared it with the board and the communication, when you have kids, how difficult it is to schedule a doctor's appointment for your kids. You know, calling and getting their schedules lined up. So imagine what it's like scheduling doctor's appointments for a whole neighborhood full of kids at a doctor's office where they haven't posted the hours. And essentially, that's what we've been trying to do, planning for this vaccine. Because we don't know how many doses we're going to get. We don't know if we're going to have to spill over. There are so many variables that we're just trying to do the best that we can and communicate as early as we can to what's happening, and that's a concern. I wanted to mention the V Project, and you might start to hear things about this. And this evening, the V Project is hosting a town hall with several area physicians who will be talking about the vaccine, how it was developed, the science behind it, and why they feel it's safe. So this is going to be shown on the V Project's Facebook page. I think we're going to try to link to it and show it on our Facebook page. It's geared towards educators, but certainly, anyone from the public is invited to watch it. We'll record it. We'll have it available. But the V Project is a brainchild of Sean Savage, an area resident and business owner, who said, you know, "In looking at the pandemic and the history, going back to the early 1900s, we know that, you know, getting the vaccine and doing that is the best thing that we can do to get our community back to normal and get kids back at school and get businesses back up and running. And let's educate folks about it." Because too often, we rely on misinformation. So I like to make the joke, you know, you see a post from your junior high science lab partner who barely got out of high school, and you're reading about their opinion on the vaccine. And you're like, "Well, that sounds pretty good." Well, tonight, we have actual doctors with degrees who live in this community, who care deeply about our well-being and their patients, who are among us. So we're excited about that opportunity and their campaign to inform folks. So it's great to be a part of that and to help out like we can. So, so it's great to be a part of that and to help out like we can. So, so we'll have more information and, and we have information that will be shared out on social media from the V Project that, that the school districts will be pushing out emails with, to, to staff about the vaccine and facts. And, and so it's going to be kind of a blitz over the next three weeks with information. So if you have time, you know, tune in and, and we'll certainly promote that.
Does it say what time? I'm trying to read it.
It, I'm sorry, it's at 7:00 PM. I, I don't have that on the screen, but it's at 7:00, 7:00 PM this evening. And, and we'll, we'll share out, we'll, I'll ask Rachel to post on our website, maybe on the landing page, information and a link that'll take you there. So the vaccine challenges, I just want to, to, I'll just go quickly through this. You know, we're hearing it, that the numbers of the vaccines that are coming in aren't meeting the demand. And, and so that's going to be a continued challenge for us and what we do. And patient and flexibility are, are the key words. We have an alternative site right now. Our, our plans for, for, for us will host St. Rose and Perrysburg. Both staffs will be administered together, the vaccine. And we've designated the Commodore Building as the site. So there's going to be a walkthrough with Wood County Health, St. Rose, our folks and Mercy to take a look at this site. We also have a backup site that we'll plan because if we lose power here, these vaccines, once they're opened, there's a shelf life, hours. So we have to move quickly. So we have to have contingency plans to make sure that the vaccine is getting into people's arms. So we've had some alternative planning that's taken place. If there is inclement weather, we're factoring that in and what we need to do. And, and if there's not enough to do everybody, what's the plan to do that? So we're working through all those different scenarios. Again, planning a doctor's appointment for an entire neighborhood. So we're working with Wood County Health Department, they've been great. We're, we're, we understand we'll have two doses to go through. We set up this site originally when we thought, as did, you know, when we explained this to you, that we would probably be having to do vaccine administration over several days or maybe even weeks. That way they could set up here, it doesn't disrupt the learning process and, and it's a, it's a, it's a good environment. But now they've shifted and said, we think we're going to try to get all the vaccines at once. I think still this is a good site, but we'll, we'll evaluate it later, later today, this week. So with all these things happening, that kind of brings us to the, the end of the school year update. So with that, there's some things that are, are in our windshield and they're getting a little bit closer. State testing. So right now the state is, is moving forward with state testing. And, and as you know, when we do normal state testing, we have to modify the school calendar in a normal pre-COVID world. Because the tests take longer than a class period and blocks and we have to arrange for that. So it's very disruptive to the learning process in terms of administering state tests. Because we have to shut down learning, we have to carve out segments of the day to administer those tests and so forth. So I know there's some legislation, some legislators are saying, you know, do we have to administer the test? A third of our school districts in Ohio haven't been in session this year. But yet we're going to require them to send their students in to do testing here in, in, you know, several weeks. So there's been a lot of conversations about that. And, and our, our, the first thing that people have to understand is the feds have to grant a waiver because there's a federal requirement to do state testing. So there's a core set of tests that the feds require. Ohio then has to follow that or they can maybe ask for a waiver to not do it. So we're hoping the administration considers allowing states to make a decision whether or not they want to administer them this year. The second piece is that in addition to the required fed tests, the state of Ohio has their required tests that aren't required by the feds. The legislature could act independently of whether or not the feds do that and eliminate those tests or suspend them for a year. So, so we're waiting to see how that's going to play out, but we're planning to, you know, how are we going to administer tests? And we'll, we'll do the very best we can to have our students prepared and to do that. But we hear from parents because, you know, we've got the vaccine and we're coordinating with all of these multiple government agencies and, and public and private schools. And we're going to lose a day of instruction and they're upset about that and rightly so. Well, how much, how many hours are we going to lose with state testing? And if that fires you up, you need to let, you know, your legislators know. Transportation for the high school has been an ongoing challenge for us. The PVAs, you know, the number of students that went into the PVA and then those that had the ability to transfer out at the semester kind of held us in limbo because we had to have seats on the bus for those students that were required by law to transport. So as we're looking at bringing the high school back into more face-to-face instruction, we want to be able to offer some limited transportation and we'll have more information about what that would look like. That's probably one, one of the most frustrating things that, that we've been contending with is how do we, in the age of COVID, how do we get so many kids on the bus, get them to and from school? High school transportation has been challenging. Parents have been very, and families have helped out with each other and doing what they can do. But if we start moving in the direction of bringing the high school back to more face-to-face instruction, that pressure is going to build because instead of two days a week, finding a ride to school, now it's going to shift to more. The PVA for next year, we're preparing a survey to go out to PVA families to ask them if this is something that they want available next school year. And, and here's the reason why. And, and we're starting to have conversations about next year. Staff will be vaccinated. We think that a, a bigger part of the, of the population will be vaccinated, but not all. And certainly students will not be vaccinated when we begin school in August. So the question that we have to ask is those families that chose to not have their children in this environment, will that need still be there? And we think maybe it will be. There might be a lesser number wanting to participate because we've lived with the, with it. And maybe those people at home, that they don't want the students to, to be around others to bring that virus home because of a vulnerable family member. Maybe that family member is now vaccinated and the kids can go to school and they're not going to be as worried. But for the worry about those students, they're still going to be in school and around others that, that, that are not vaccinated, their peers. So that survey is a step in getting that information to us so that we can begin to plan accordingly. We've also talked to a couple of local districts about what if, if we have a small number, they have a small number, is it something that we can partner to provide better service and, and keep our costs down? It's really premature to, 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 to do that until we start to collect data. But that's something that we're going to be doing. Prom and graduation, Dr. Short is, is really working on that. And, and these are, you know, significant milestones in students' lives and families. So graduation, we will have a ceremony. It'll be more like what we've had in the past, but not exactly. And, and it probably won't be like we had last year where we had individual families, you know, with, with their graduates show up one at a time. So we're looking and exploring some different options for us. If we can play football on a Friday night and, and have 1,200 people in the stands, I think we can figure out a way to, to have a graduation ceremony where we can bring people together. So that's what we're working towards. Prom is a little different animal because now we're starting to talk about halls and places to host prom. Proms are very similar to a wedding. Sometimes proms lead to weddings, but that's for a different meeting. But dinner, dancing, you know, those kinds of activities with weddings, those are still prohibited activities. So halls are not willing to necessarily open up the doors for a prom to do all those things. So we're exploring what changes could happen between now and then. We're also exploring maybe changing the idea of what prom is. You know, prom, maybe prom isn't a dinner and, and a dance. Maybe it's outdoor activities and maybe it's something else. So, so the high school, they're, they're having conversations, meaningful conversations about trying to give kids some kind of experience within the bounds of what is permissible. So there'll be more information on that. And of course, the, the plans for the high school portables. We had a great presentation last, last time from Dr. Short, who talked about the challenges of the master schedule. We have a very large incoming freshman class that is significantly larger than our outgoing senior class. And frankly, the classes behind that are larger than the classes that'll be exiting. So the high school will be getting fuller. And he talked about the fact that there are several periods a day right now where there isn't space. And, and that's going to only get worse next year. So we've begun to talk to the city about portables. We'll be working through the operations committee on, on that. So that's kind of just, just things that are on our to-do list as we prepare for the end of the year. So let's talk about the end of the year. Next Tuesday on, on February 16th, we would like to bring to the board some recommendation to, to the board regarding what's going to happen with the rest of the year in terms of the hybrid plan. So what we'd like to do is with preschool, we want to continue with the current hybrid that we have in place. A lot of the legislation and things and orders that have happened are K-12 and preschool is actually not governed by the Ohio Department of Education and doesn't fall under pre, doesn't fall under the K-12. So when they talk about these changes in schools, it doesn't necessarily apply to preschool. So, so preschool, we're staying the course. For elementaries, what we're looking to do is move from the current four-day plan to, to five days, four day a week to five days a week. And we're targeting March 1st as the, the date to, to do that. So the question is, well, well, why? As we've seen before, we're starting to trend downward with the number of COVID cases. We're starting to see a reduction with the number of cases that are in, in our buildings. And we know that, that, that social distancing changes with quarantining, three foot instead of six foot have, have been applied to the elementaries. And, and that is something that opens the door for us to have this conversation. For this to happen, there are some barriers that we have to overcome. So one of the challenges is food service, recess and, and our specials classes, music, art, PE. So we've changed those dramatically to keep kids separated and isolated from other students. But if we're going to do five days a week, we have to have a way to offer food service this way in the cafeteria. Also the, the time with specials and, and continue with recess. So we're going to have to figure out a way to make that work in that space. So we have a couple of weeks to try to come to terms with that. So if we said we're doing this tomorrow, we wouldn't be able to do it because we don't have answers. We don't want kids lining up shoulder to shoulder waiting with food trays to get their food. Right now we're delivering foods to the classrooms individually, handing them out. This will, this will change. And we also have to get our monitors back because we've made some adjustments because we haven't need monitors because the teachers have been doing that. So this will change that. So we have our work cut out for us to try to figure out a way, but that's our goal for elementary is, is moving from four days to, to five days. At HPI, what we're proposing on, on March 1st is to revert back to the four-day-a-week, Tuesday through Friday plan. That's what we did for most of the second semester, or I'm sorry, the first semester. And we'd like to revert back to that. The, the system that we had in place with the things that were operating that way worked well until they didn't. And we saw that community spread increase. We had to close the, the building to face-to-face learning because of the number of teachers that were isolating and in quarantine. As we move towards the end of the year, that becomes less of an issue for us to contend with. And if the numbers are low in the community, they're going to continue to be low in the building. So, so that is something that we're looking to do. For the junior high, we're looking to have March 1st as a return date where those students will come back four days a week. And, and that's important for us to, to, to prepare for that as well. Those barriers that I talked about with lunches, passing time and so forth. We had a couple, we had a short, brief period in November where this did happen, where we went back to four days and, and we had a, you know, we had a, a, a brief time where it worked out well. And then as the community number spiked, we saw that reflection in the building. So they've had a dry run with doing that. And then finally with the high school, we're looking for a, a March 30th return to four days or to four days of face-to-face. So we've seen this continued drop in, in the high school. That's our, our largest building, 1,600 students. Lunch, you know, serving lunch, hallways, restrooms, all those areas are things that we've been planning and talking about what to do when we get all the students back. We know that it's going to take time for us to work through some of those things. And we also know in the middle of March, we have spring break. So what we're looking to do is begin on March 30th, which actually is the, the week after spring break. So that Tuesday. So that'll give spring break us an opportunity to go through the building, really spend time with the, the contact tracing team, trying to maximize space in classrooms, all those kinds of things. So it gives us time to roll up the sleeves, look at food service, look at all those things with just more bodies. So, so that's what we're looking to do. So the question is, well, why four days a week and not, and not five? And while staff will be vaccinated and, and we're excited about that, we know that students aren't. And we know that students, and we showed that earlier slide, at one point this year, we had 15% of our students who were not in school because of the virus. We're still going to have students who aren't going to be in school, who will be getting the virus, who will be having to quarantine. And they're going to be home. And we know that the high school, the junior high, Hall Prairie, there's more incidents of that than there are at the elementary level. So we're still going to need that time to support those students who are home. So, you know, that is why we're, we're, we're maintaining that recommendation, you know, as we look at returning. And, you know, certainly we'll want to, to closely monitor that. And, and if we get to a place where there is such low incidence of students being quarantined or isolated, we'll, we'll talk about that, you know? And, and again, we built the schedule, Hall, Hall Prairie is one, and you recall this where, you know, the, the schedule is built around the hybrid and what we're doing. So for us to, to move it back to five days a week, it will take time to try to figure out how to put the pieces back together again. We shared music teachers with other buildings and we've, they've done a, a masterful job of finding balance in all those things. So if one building moves and another one doesn't, that, that creates a little bit of a ripple effect throughout the district. But we're going to continue to look and see if we can make further adjustments moving forward. But we're anticipating through the rest of the year, we'll still be dealing with COVID. We're still going to need to have students and staff in masks. We're still going to need to do social distancing to the best of our ability. But it's pretty clear from the CDC today saying, kids need to be back in school. Well, our kids have been back in school. They have been face-to-face. Our students have had a long period of time, very consistent instruction. We haven't been yo-yoing students around. And that was one of the things back in June, July and August, the board talked about. We can't do that to families, can't do that to staff. And I think we've been successful at staying the course, giving students as much instruction as we can. And there's a lot of questions that have to be answered between now and these dates that we just shared. But what we'd like to do is lay this out for the board and, and begin the discussion. We've got two weeks before the board is back. And at that meeting, I think we, you know, talk about what we've heard and, and ongoing conversations and refine and tweak, answer questions, and then we hope to bring the board a, a, you know, a plan that would be something that, that members can support and certainly the community can support as well. So it's exciting to think about getting kids more and, and frequently meeting and back. But it's also a little bit scary too, because COVID isn't, it hasn't gone away. And it's still going to be an issue and a struggle. But, but I think, you know, we're, we're taking a big step forward and I think it's time that we consider it. So, so that's where we are and we appreciate everyone's patience and understanding. And the conversation that we're having today is going to be happening in every school district, virtually every school district in, in Ohio. And so, so we're not alone with the struggles and what we can and can't do and what we'd like to do, so.
Thank you, Mr. Hosler. Couple of things that I'll start out and then open up to the board. First of all, thanks for all the information because the questions I know that I've been receiving from community members, perhaps the rest of you have also, good questions, good answers here today. And I think it's And I think it's clear that from the very beginning of COVID, this board through Mr. Hostler's guidance has said, we're going to go with the experts, the CDC. And we had, it's important that people know, we follow what CDC and Wood County recommended, but we also had them face-to-face with us in a meeting. So we have listened to them and we had the ProMedica epidemiologist with us to provide us with data and information because we're not the experts. And so to hear today's review that we're not acting as a board because we, we got the gavel and what have you, we're acting on what the professionals are providing for us and the data that Mr. House has provided for us. So I think that's important. My question I would have on Mondays, currently it's Schoology for elementary. I'm not sure it's high school and junior high school, are the middle schools, fifth, sixth, HPI, are they doing the Zoom classes on Mondays?
No.
No. So is that something that we could look into as we keep that four days as to where we could go to a Zoom schedule on Mondays? That'd just be a question for the staff to see if that's something to be possible. I know why we have Monday set aside now for the staff, I get that. But I'm wondering if we can continue with, if we go with the four days, maybe that Monday will shift.
Yeah, we can look into that.
That's all I had, open it up to the board for questions.
Yeah, I had a, I had a question on the, when you were doing the slide on the ORC, does the ORC refer to when it's talking about health department boards? Is it talking about the state board or is it talking about county boards? Or just by saying board, that's all-inclusive of all boards in the state of Ohio?
I'd have to pull up the full to, to see if it's implied, if it is referring to health departments across the state. There's 88 health departments and there's one state department. So I'm not sure if it's referring to in both in 3701, 13 and then 3707, 08, if it's referring to all health departments or if it's just the Ohio Department of Health. So I can get back to you on that.
Because I, I find it interesting that if, if it's saying that, that the counties are all acting independently of one another, which in a way makes sense because that's putting local authority where the local authorities should be. But at the same time, if a county is doing differently than what the state health board is suggesting, it's no wonder we're all sitting here scratching our heads going, well, what do we do? And I think your point is well taken that all of a sudden, we've been floating along here where everybody was in step with one another and then it was like, and that's what, that's what threw things kind of amok a little bit. And a lot of misunderstandings and I have to, I have to say, I have been confused. Even sitting here, I've been confused. Wait a minute, I thought you didn't have to do 14 days and it could be 10 days. Well, what's this, I mean, it's been, it's been difficult. And admittedly, I do not, I, I give kudos to anybody who can sit through these constant things from Dewine. I appreciate the, the fact that he's trying to reach out and be informative. But goodness, I don't have that much patience, I guess. So I, I, you know, I kind of go to the Cliff Notes and maybe that's part of my confusion is because I am going to the Cliff Notes type of thing. But yeah, the, the emails that we've gotten, and I was pretty sure that they were copied to all of us this past week. I mean, normally I will respond within, within 24 hours if nothing else. And there have been a few though, I just didn't even know what to say. Because, I mean, I understand the frustration, but I think the frustration is universal. I don't think it's Perrysburg specific. I, I truly mean it when I say, God bless y'all because I don't know how you guys are vertical. I really don't. I would be burying my head in the sand saying, I can't take anymore. So I, I understand the frustration, but I haven't really known how to answer these last group of emails that we've gotten. Brent made a, a pretty good point that in switching to the Mondays, which on the surface seems logical, and it's been one of the most fascinating things that I think I've learned about being on the board. Well, of course it seems logical. If you're doing, if you're making school on Friday or taking Friday off, well then flip it back. And then you start to peel back the layers, just as you explained, of the ripple effect that that creates. And then you kind of go, oh yeah, duh, I can't, it's not that easy to, as you say, turn a ship on a dime. And I don't remember where I was going with that. Why did I even start talking about that?
Well, that was one of the, one of the concerns that we heard. In addition to, I think, to help the calm, the community parents, they're looking for that date. I think you gave them some, we had some dates today that will be discussed at the next meeting. But now they've got a, a target, they, okay, our kids are going to go back to school four days or five days on this date. So I think that was what I was reading into some of the emails also.
That's true, that's true. And that, that brought up another question. If the second dose is after your target date of starting, is that logical? Or do you wait until after the second dose? Because now I can't remember, I remember that the two were different.
Yeah.
One was in March. Oh, look at you, just zip right over there, March 12th, March 19th. Does, does the second dose then make the person vac, fully vaccinated? Or is the first dose viable to get them through so that they're safe if we've brought everybody back?
So I'm, I'm not a doctor, so I'll do the best I can. So that, that could be a good question for the town hall tonight. My understanding is it takes two doses to be fully vaccinated. So the first dose gets you part of the way there, makes you a little more resistant to it. The second dose puts you over the top. So, so two doses would, would put whatever the percent, 95, 97, whatever the number is for that particular vaccine. That's something that we talked about. And, and, you know, from a staff perspective, I think they would feel, I can't speak for all the staff. We haven't surveyed them, but I think they'd feel better being vaccinated and, and having that as, as things change. But we also have had our elementaries operating basically in this format the entire year. And for, for a semester, we had HPI operating much like we're asking them to go back to, without any doses, without anything. And, and we've been able to do that. They've been very vigilant with protecting and distancing and hygiene, masks, all those things. And I think it's helped us get to where we are today. So I, I think we've been there. I think we've had that experience, so we know how to do it. But they won't be fully vaccinated. And, and I think that's something that in the next two weeks, that the board will want to kind of think about and think through. That's a good point.
Well, I, I had my first shot and they give you a little information sheet with it. I had the Pfizer. And what they told us, what was on the information sheet was that you still had to be vigilant, as you said. But also after your second shot, it's another two weeks before it is fully active. But even after the second shot and the extra two weeks, you're still supposed to wear your, wear your mask and socially distance. So I, I don't see the benefit of waiting. If, if we would have to wait until April.
Well, and that was part of my question was, do we wait until after spring break? Which seemed like a, a logical time to give them that with the additional two weeks. That's, that's something about the vaccine I haven't understood. If you get the vaccine, but you're still doing all the same precautions? I will try and watch this tonight. I don't know if I'm good, I've already got plans for tonight, so I'm not sure if I'll be able to watch it. But I think, to me, I don't want to make that decision. To me, that's something that the staff should give us their feedback on, what they're comfortable with. Because they're the ones, they're our frontline people. They're the ones who are facing this. I mean, obviously the goal of the board and the goal of the administration is to get normalcy back as quickly as possible. How, when are they comfortable in doing that? I think that's, I think that's important. I don't want to force them back if they're not comfortable with doing that, just because it's an arbitrary date on the calendar. I know Dewine wanted everybody back in school, March 1st, and I thought his wording was poor. In school has a lot of different definitions right now. I mean, we've been in school compared to Bowling Green, for example. We have not been in school compared to some schools that were able to go five days a week and do that because they're smaller, they don't have everything that we deal with. So I think, I think the, the wording was unfortunate. I think that caused some confusion too.
I, I also think that we really have to look at the total picture. And I may be wrong, but I think what we're doing is working for maybe 25% of our kids. And it is failing for another 25%.
Talking about education, you're talking about the education?
The hybrid.
You're talking about the education, the, the style?
Yes, yes. I, I think we should give the state tests. I think we should know where we, where we are. I think we should know how much damage has been done and what we can do to rectify it. So I, I was in favor of giving exams at the high school. I really was. I, I think they should have given the same exam they gave last year to, we don't know how effective or ineffective we really are. I have grandchildren who are doing very little, unfortunately. And it's a problem, it's a real problem. And when you just say, well, they're not trying, it's, they're not able to try. It would be wonderful if every 15-year-old came to, came to address this as, I want to be a student and I want to work overtime and I want to go delve into this heart and soul. But I, I, at 15, I don't think my thoughts were about my college education, were about the kind of person I was going to be 10 years later. My thoughts were prom, you know, I mean, cheerleading, those kinds of things. That's what kids think about. And I, I think the risk factor for our staff is small. I think that, I think absolutely we have to provide a way for our teachers to be able to, to distance the six feet. I, I think they need that, more so than the students need it. I think we have to do everything we can to protect the teachers, but we also have to do something to help our students.
I, I think you're right, Mrs. Downs. I had a chance to talk three or four of the folks that sent us emails on the phone, call them and talk to them, great conversations. We're getting to that point, the breaking point, the flitting point to where I think Tom, Mr. Hostler used the example of that new car, that fresh smell. So we went to Schoology, wow, this was great. We went to the Zoom on Mondays, this is fantastic, it worked for remote. But that is getting pretty stinky now, it's getting old, if I could say it. And I think we need to get the kids back to school. And I like, and I know we'll talk about it at the next meeting and have conversation with Mr. Hostler in between. But I like that we've got some dates. Hopefully they'll, they'll all have the first vaccine, but I think we got to get them, we got to try it like we did for the junior high. Let's get them in, let's see what happens. We can react to what happens, but I think for the kids' sake, for the parents' sake, for our families, let's get them in school, let's get going when these vaccinations get going. Even if it's the first one, we don't get the second one, let's try it. That's just my, my thought right now.
I was just going to say, I, I fully agree. I've said this before, as a parent with a child in the district, it is not working. We need to do something different. Personally, the remote Mondays, I feel like are a complete waste. I, I, I'd like to see that go away. I also, I, the emails we've gotten, I've reached out to people as well, I feel the frustration. And I couldn't agree more with what people are saying. We need to move on this. We are losing the children socially, emotionally, academically. And I feel for that because I see it, I see it every day in my daughter. And it's emotional for me to talk about. I mean, it, it is a struggle, it truly, truly is. And we're doing them a disservice from not being in school. Talking about it at the next meeting, we need to do something. We need to move a little faster, I believe, before March 1st. Definitely, in looking at what you proposed, the, the high school coming in after spring break. For me, no, I, I want to see them back March 1st. I would even say before that. I mean, however, I understand there's, you know, a lot that needs to be done. But even if we decide next meeting, two weeks, I would think, again, I brought this up before, we need to be able to pivot. We've been talking about it. If the intent has all been all along to bring these kids back in person for, or five days a week since August, again, I don't, I don't think it needs two months to figure that out. Yeah, I mean, I, I just, I just wanted to, you know, address that we've gotten these emails. I, I, you know, fully agree with the people's frustration and, and just need to move forward. About the vaccine, we've already made decisions regardless of the vaccine. Back in August, I have elementary, those teachers have been working, faculty and staff have been here. Didn't even know about a vaccine back then. It's great, it's here, it's an option. Get it if you're comfortable with it, don't, if you don't want it. You know, whatever people's personal choice is, great. But I don't think that's a deciding factor in when we should bring the students back. Obviously, 350 schools are back full-time in Ohio and vaccine or not. So it can be done, it should be done, let's move forward with that.
I think if the schools that are back five days a week, if they're all like Perrysburg schools, that's, that's a, an accurate comparison. If they're not like Perrysburg schools with a community that experienced a rapid and significant spike at week 13, and I think it's quite ominous that it was week 13, I don't know, there just seems to be something in that number, that, that was, that was our dictator, that was what was happening, plus the fact of what the health department board was dictating. So, yeah, I mean, it's, I think what we've done under what we're quote unquote forced to do, we've done what we can and we've done an exceptional job. And, and right before that outbreak is when we started bringing students back and then, you know, there's no way to control that.
An exceptional job at what though? I mean, planning, yeah. But, I mean, like again, I can tell you firsthand, you've gotten so many emails, it's not working. I mean, it simply is not working.
Well, it's, it's not working for, in comparison to what we did and have always done in this extraordinary district. It's, it's, we're in a war zone right now. And during wartime, it's not going to be Perrysburg standards. I get that. But I think there's been a lot going on, don't you, that, that But I think there's been a lot going on, don't you, that, that has been positive under the circumstances? Can it be improved? I don't, I wish we would have the Zoom classes. I don't understand really that argument, why there hasn't been more. While we went to the asynchronous way to accommodate such a mass amount of people who didn't want that kind of regimented type of schooling, so I, I get that. But I think the Zoom thing is now showing that that's what these students really need, a little bit more interaction with one another. I think they were expecting K-12, right? You know, that, that kind of educational format. So I wish we could have done more of that, and I really don't know how to answer why we haven't been able to do that. But I think if we have to keep going with this remote education, I would like to see more of that. And that's probably a Schaefer question to find out what the technical logistics of doing something like that is, but.
Yeah, I think, I think some of it is hardware in terms of, you know, when you think about your home and you have television that's, you know, you're streaming a movie, and you have somebody that's playing a game, and your network bogs down. And we're in a one-to-one environment, so if we have some students in the building, some that are at home, and then we're streaming out audio/video in every one of our, you know, 120 classrooms at the high school, it's like your home. It, it can, it can really draw down in terms of what we're capable of doing, that, that pipe. So that, that's one of the physical challenges that we've dealt with, with that, so.
And so I've get asked that question, why aren't we doing a, for the kids that are quarantined or the kids that aren't in class? So you could have four instructional days, like, in, well, two in-person or two on Zoom. And can you explain why we're not doing that again? Because aren't students, when they're, like, when my daughter's at the junior high, I get email from her, like, they're online, so the problem there is what?
So if you have, if you have half your class in on Tuesday, the other half on, on Wednesday, Thursday, Friday. So, so what you're saying, if I understand the question, so if you have half your students on Tuesday, you cover Lesson 1, and then the other half of the students would be home watching Lesson 1. And then the next day, the other half would be in on Wednesday, the teacher would be doing Lesson 2, and then the students at home would be watching Lesson 2, and then so forth. Part of the problem, as I just explained, is the, the size, the number of people that would be on our network and in the building, and us pushing that out across all the district, because it's the high school. We all have one, all of our, oops, all of our networks tie into one pipe, and that one pipe goes out. So what ends up happening is just like your home, when you have people that are doing these, you know, taking, streaming and downloading and all those kinds of things, that would be happening in every one of those classrooms, not only by the students who are one-to-one with their device, but also the teacher and their device. That would bog down our system where we wouldn't be able to, to buffer, to, we wouldn't be able to push that out in a, in a, in a way that we could support.
But that's not happening now. Like, how, how are the kids online now, all at the junior high or high school?
We're not streaming that video/audio every hour, every day, in every classroom. So if we have 300 teachers, that's 300 streaming audio/video that's taking up that much pipe. And then we have the kids who are on their devices, sitting in those classrooms, and then that's on that pipe. And then all of that is going to one trunk and then going out. And that's where we struggle with the ability to support that. Now, I'm probably doing a terrible disservice explaining it, but that's kind of the, the other piece is too, is that we would have to order additional equipment for every classroom because our teachers use their devices to teach from. So when you're using your device as a camera and recording device, you can't really use it as a, as a machine. So we take attendance on our device, we pull up things to show in class, all those kinds of things. So we would have to also look at bringing in cameras, like we have here, to all 350 rooms and wiring for that, and, and that's where that hardware building out that pipe is important. So we can have Brent sit down and kind of walk through it, but those are just some of the, Brent, our technology director.
I'll send a email. I was on, on the, with Gretchen, we were with Mr. Schwartzmiller discussing that same thing. I'll send that to the rest of the board. And Mr. Hostler did state that 10 o'clock at high school, classes begin, 60 to 70 teachers begin a Zoom class. It wouldn't handle it. It couldn't handle it. That's one of five things that Mr. Schwartzmiller's brought up. I'll send that email to you.
Okay. And then one thing I want to circle back to the, in November, when we did do the, the remote Monday, so it is possible to do it. We just need to plan. So why don't we look at, like, April, which would give you plenty of time, six weeks, to do two remote Mondays, or not remote, two in-person Mondays for those students who are Friday are going to miss instructional one-on-one time with a Monday in April?
I mean, we can, we can, we can consider that, and we can ask. Again, when we did it in November, it was two of our eight buildings. So it's a much smaller population. So expanding it out to a larger population just makes it a little more. But we do have more time knowing that that's happening. This, it, it sounds like far away, you know, February 19th, but in terms of planning, it's, it's, it's pretty close, so, and it's district-wide. So it's something we can, we can look at for sure. The other thing that, that we have to keep in mind, too, as we get into that, those testing windows are, are also going to start to become a factor, you know? If we start having to administer the tests and moving days. So we have to take a look at our, our state testing calendar to make sure that it might, depending on how that falls, and I don't know, I'll have to chat.
Or do, or do it in May. Yeah. I just think people are frustrated with when your child goes eight days a month, and you just took two of those away. So they have options. They'll look at alternatives instead of, we just can't. I'd like to see something like that.
So I've always looked at this. All year, this has been a balance of, of really three competing forces. Safety of our staff and our students. Le- as minimal disruption as possible to the community members, to the parents and the families in the district, as well as providing, you know, a level of education. Hopefully, as great as what it has been in the past, but, you know, providing some forward momentum in the education of our children. And, you know, it certainly has felt like that, we'll call it a boat, I guess a three-sided boat. I don't know boats that well. You know, it certainly lists too much to one side or the other as we've been trying to do this balance. We make moves to shift things back. So when, when I hear, you know, it's not working, you know, it's probably on what spectrum? I, I have certainly, as a, as a parent with, with a student in the system and, and friends, the education has been better. We are missing something. We'll absolutely, we'll absolutely stipulate to that. But I also, you know, kind of commend the, the, the teachers and the administrators and the building staff, everybody that has been working so hard. I would say twice as hard. There's this mindset, it feels like, from time to time, that if we're only in class half the time, the teachers are only working half as hard, and I, I don't believe that for a second. That is just not true. So the, the safety, the less disruption, the education progress that has been made during a worldwide pandemic, I think is commendable. We're moving into the second year of this pandemic, and the frustration, the COVID fatigue, I think is the popular term, is real. Feeling it outside of education, seeing it in the businesses and the people I interact with day-to-day. We're still not back. At least, our office staff's still not back. I, I spend a lot of time talking to companies, colleagues from other companies on Zoom, where I'm looking at their kitchens. So they're not back in yet. So kind of this thought that a lot of businesses are, are back already, you know, it just ain't so. A lot of them still aren't. But recognizing that COVID fatigue, it's in my house, it's with my neighbors, my friends as well. I am excited about this plan to move us forward in some way. And, and as I've been reading the emails, that's what I've heard the call for, is what is the plan? I don't get fixated on a date so much, because I think just listening to this discussion in here, there are several, several additional considerations that need to be made. A couple of questions, you know, that, that I do have, and maybe I've gotten some of the answers. How much is this plan dependent on the vaccine timeline? So the vaccine distribution has been shaky. It feels like it's stabilizing. A lot of people working very hard to make that work, but it has been shaky. So if for some reason February 19th isn't the date, what does that do to the, the March 1 or the March 30th date? And then I'm also interested, because I, as, as people have asked me, Eric, what does it take to get schools back four or five days a week? Vaccines, in my opinion, vaccines, and some clarity on social distancing. So I will be interested to hear, particularly at the high school, how this concept of social distancing is going to work. Because I've kind of had it in my mind, we can't do better than six feet, maybe we can't do better than three feet. So I will want to hear that, too. I guess one more comment. On, on the Mondays, one thing I'll throw into that discussion is that over at Penta, and they had done four days in class together at a high school level longer than most, they were seeing a lot of appreciation, a lot of need for that fifth remote day. For some of the reasons that we've just talked about in here. Primarily, for me, the, there is a need there for those students that are quarantined. Because boy, once a student gets quarantined, and if we're back four days, when we're, I'm sorry, when we're back four days, like, at the high school level, and a child has to be quarantined, because that will continue to happen, you know, they're going to fall behind very, very quickly, which makes some sort of, and if it isn't, if it isn't a remote Monday, I'll be interested in hearing what is the mechanism to make sure that, that those children don't fall behind. Because two weeks of mislearning is tough, tough to recover from. I don't know, any of that made sense, so I'll be quiet now, but. Made a lot of sense, thank you. Absolutely.
I do want to add, I've been very critical this morning, and I've said it isn't working. But every time, and this is, I send this message often to parents that say it's not working, and, and in some aspects, it's not. But on Friday, December 4th, Thomas, my grandson, wrote, "Mr. Hensches, my trig teacher, has gone above and beyond to make sure we are doing okay and understanding everything. He hasn't overworked us, but it's all been meaningful in terms of actually making sense and being helpful. I just thought you should know." And for every Mr. Hensches, there are more Mr. Hensches. And, and we have to appreciate what they have done in this unbearable time.
Absolutely. Yep. Well said. With one more comment, Mr. Hostler, a question. Can, to Gretchen's point earlier, people are saying we're falling behind and we're not learning, da, da, da. We, I used, when I graded papers back in the day, and someone, I always hated to put in red ink 60% because that's not academically the standards that we want to be at. But you know, 60%, you know something. You know something. You learn something. So I always make that comment. We can do better. So is there a need for the end of the year, some sort of a process of, let's, let's give a standardized test, Perrysburg standardized test. If the state doesn't require it, it may forfeit it. Maybe there's a, a way we can, let's gauge that. Let's gauge, not going against evaluations for teachers or administrators, but let's just gauge where we're at in reading, writing, and arithmetic, so to speak. And that, I think that might be something we could think about. But again, I know time and days are short, for sure. But thanks for all the comments.
Yeah, I think, I think there's, I, I, the whole, the, the testing thing, if I can just kind of address that. I, I think there's this perception that we don't know where the students are. And, and I would argue that every one of our classroom teachers knows exactly where the students are, where they have been in the past, and, you know, comparing it to other years. So when I talk to teachers in the district, I hear often, well, you know, we're, we're about, we're the same spot, or we're here, we're there, but here's a little different, here is this. So I, I, you know, to carve out time and money and effort to, to test, to evaluate, I think we rely on our professional educators, and we have great Jim Hensches out there that are great, who are thoughtful, who if you pulled Jim in and said, what is your, where are the kids compared to other years? He would be able to tell you exactly what the strengths and weaknesses. So I think there could be a dialogue that we could have that, that would be more meaningful than necessarily, you know, we're going to burn, you know, we just had a discussion about how we need to get time back for kids. We don't want them sitting down, not getting instruction, taking a test, so that we can look at it a month later to say, "Ah, you're, you're two weeks behind. Okay, we, we, we knew that." And Dr. Short is, I, I told him I'll, I'll attribute this to him until he leaves, and then I'll claim it as my own. But he does a lot of woodworking, and he says, you know, when you cut down a tree that, or working with lumber, timber, whatever the phrase is, he'll, he'll correct me when we're done here. You look at the rings of growth that that tree has had, and you can tell that 50 years ago, there must have been a drought or some kind of an event because the ring, the growth was small. And all of a sudden, you'll see a big ring where there was a lot of growth. And I think students are a lot like those trees, where there's going to be times where there isn't as much growth. And then there's times where there's going to be tremendous growth. And I think we're going to see that with our students, that they will respond to this. And, you know, I, I, over the summer, I read a, a book about the, you know, Churchill and the Battle of Britain, and I've taught, I've written about it in some of the community updates. And I think about the bombings that went on in, in Britain, night after night, that destroyed homes and schools, and people got up, and they cleared the streets, and they tried to go on. How did that affect those students? What impact did that have that their school was, like, literally bombed? Those rings were probably pretty small in the 19, early 1940s in Britain. But in the years after, you know, those people went on to become, you know, the, this, this greatest generation that we hear about, to contribute. So I, I think things will have a way of, of getting there. And, you know, we are doing the absolute best that we can. I know people hear that. It's all we can do. I mean, I, you know, I had a son that graduated last year. Of all the graduates and all the things that people experienced, I know the pain and the loss, and the last thing we want to do is design anything that's going to put a child through arbitrarily or electively what my son went through. And, and we wouldn't do that. So we have to find that balance. And, and I think we've done the best that we can. And are we happy with it? No. So I don't want to give the impression that this is great, we'd love it, this is the best we can do, you know? And, and, you know, we're always looking for ways that we can do better. We're always looking for an option to do more, whether it be the PVA or the classes, the programming, the mental health outreach, the things that we're doing. Those things are all happening because we're trying to do those things. But, you know, this isn't what any of us wants for our students, for our communities. But I think, given what we have, we're, we're doing the best that we can. And, and I think, you know, there is going to be a ring of growth this year. It's just not going to be as big as the next year, when things are back on normal, and there, that, that, that growth ring is going to be huge, so.
And to that point, our educators, our teachers, they know that coming in next fall, the expectations for review would be a little bit higher. I don't expect a, a student to have this material until I review that material. I, I imagine that will be a discussion that each member would have, a staff member. Maybe decimals is one area, and fractions is one area that needs to be really emphasized before I go on to the next lesson in Algebra 1, so to speak, you know? I think that's something the staff would do a great job of knowing. Some of the things that maybe didn't get covered as much because of this year, but it's important for progress in the future.
All right. Thank you.
So the portable classrooms is already?
We, we, we mentioned that, yeah. They're coming.
You mentioned that that will be in Operations Committee as we work on that, so we'll be discussing that then in Operations?
Yes, and we're hoping at the next board meeting to do a more in-depth presentation because we're going to be needing to make a decision about what types of portables and, and so forth. So to get things set up so that they're open when school resumes in August, we will need to start that process now, actually. It seems like a long way off, but it's, it's here, so.
Will Dave be here to help with that?
So, yeah, we'll have Dave and James and walk us through the different options, so. So, yeah, we'll have Dave and James and walk us through the different options, so, yeah.
Okay, that takes us to item number four, the consent agenda, which will take us five through six. And again, you can see that, different things with staff and retirements and supplementals and so forth, all the way to the resolution on House Bill 409 with substitute teaching license, and a motion to accept the consent agenda.
So moved?
Second?
Is the resolution in the consent agenda that, I wasn't?
We need a second first, and we'll have discussion.
Second?
Go ahead, Sue.
Yeah, I wasn't sure.
It is.
The resolution is in there?
Yeah, consent agenda items five through six, and that's number six.
Six, one?
Uh-huh.
Yep.
Wanted to point out retirement, Deb Drew is, is a high school English teacher.
Yeah. I was surprised.
You know, she's a phenomenal educator and, and human being, so just wanted to highlight that she is calling it a career with us. But certainly, just a wonderful teacher in person, and we'll certainly miss her there in the high school, so wanted to highlight that.
Certainly a valuable staff member, yes.
She, I, I want to ditto that. She, she has taught my children and my grandchildren, and she's just extraordinary. And I, I especially like the amount of effort she puts in to your college essays, because the rewriting and the writing and the rewriting and the thinking and the going at it from different angles gives the children a better sense of who they are and what they're capable of. And I, I think that that's what she's done the best, is making children see who they are and how great they can be.
Any other questions?
I had a question.
Yes.
The reinstate contract for the staff here? What's the need to bring them back now? Are we preparing for something, or what, why now are they coming back?
So with the, with the additions that, that we're, we're planning on, on having with this, we're, with the schedule and bringing folks back, we know we're going to need more support, so.
So it's in preparation for bringing the kids back? Excellent.
I had a question about 409, because that totally, I totally missed that. Is this just in response to schools clamoring for a human body to be available for substitute teachers, having been one for 20 years? I understand that.
Yes.
That, that's how I read it, is that they were lowering the requirements just to allow more people to come in?
Yes.
To do it?
Yes.
So from what I understood, it's going to allow each district to set their own parameters as to what they will accept, like maybe, maybe Eastwood's parameters on, on a non-degreed individual might be different than what Perrysburg has. Have we sat down? Or does the, because I didn't find any place where the resolution was, I didn't see the resolutions, that's why I was hesitant to second the consent agenda. Have we listed out? I didn't see this in policy. So this was a surprise to me. Is there a resolution that's written that we haven't seen? Is there, what are our parameters for allowing somebody to come in and sub for our faculty and staff? Does this include, is this just for faculty, or is it for our staff as well?
So it, so part, part of it, it was a, it was, House Bill 409 was passed and signed into law, so there wasn't like a long ramp up. This was like, here's language, you can do this if you want to, to, to get more subs. So the, the time from when this was signed to where we are today, there hasn't been a great deal of time to, to really present it, talk about it, digest it. Essentially, what it does is, it is, as it talks about a one-year temporary non-bachelor substitute teaching license. So it allows districts to do just that. So somebody who doesn't have a, a bachelor's degree, we could allow them to be a classroom substitute. So for our district, there may be some instances where we would do that if we don't have enough subs, and, and sometimes we don't. We have the right to determine who would that person be. So I'll, I'll give you an example of how this could play out for us. So let's say that we have a paraprofessional who's been with the district for 12 years, who's worked alongside that teacher, who we know, who we trust, and we can't find a substitute, and we could allow that paraprofessional who's been in a school setting for 12 years to take over that classroom for one day, versus hiring somebody that has a bachelor's degree, who has a license, who maybe hasn't had 12 years' experience to be the sub for that day. We know when that happens, that para in that classroom basically runs the classroom anyway. So it would allow us to utilize, so there would be a lot of discretion on our part in terms of who that would be. In a smaller district, you know, where, where you might have a bus driver who's been there for, you know, 30 years, who knows, you know, every parent and, and every child, and let's pull them in to be a sub because they have the capabilities to do it. It just gives that opportunity for us to maybe tap those folks that right now are on the outside looking in. So it wouldn't, for us, it wouldn't provide a wholesale change where now we're advertising on Craigslist for people. But we might be looking at that para, we might be looking at those staff members that are known quantities who can't sub, to, why don't you come over and, and sub for us?
Okay.
So that's what it would do. So it's, it's not going to change a lot, but it gives us maybe a couple extra levers that we could pull if needed.
Gotcha. Well, I feel a little bit more comfortable about that now.
In Michigan, you know, in Michigan, they, their sub standards, or sub standards, their standards for subs.
There you go.
Is 90 hours to get a sub license in Michigan at one time, so I don't know what it is today. So there's other states around us that have gone below and, and have used it. And, and when, and when I worked in Michigan, when we had that standard, we had some subs that were just, you know, yeah, they didn't, they, maybe they had an associate's degree, but they had life experience and raised three kids and were great subs, and we loved that they could sub for us. And, and, you know, so we're going to look for those kind of folks.
Gotcha. Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Anybody else? Real call, please, Mr. Harrington?
Mr. Bennington?
Yes.
Mrs. Downs?
Yes.
Mrs. Eubank?
Yes.
Ms. Larmour?
Yes.
Mr. Pullman?
Yes. Motion passed. Now we go to seven, seven one to board discussion. Any other discussion, any new business at this time?
I just wanted to say, that was so nice, all the school board recognition cards we got, I read each and every one, and what I noticed from most of the elementary students, they were thanking us for allowing them to come back to the classroom. And I felt that was very moving. And again, I'd like to be able to do that for the fifth through 12th grade, have them back in person. Not sure if they would all thank us, but nonetheless, I thought it was very heartwarming.
And I want to apologize for texting, I have an ill dog at home. And I've got a dog sitter there, and she was freaking out, so just had to, had to rescue my dog sitter.
Good luck.
Life comes in all shapes and sizes, right?
Yes, it does.
Sounds like a move for adjournment, then.
There you go.
Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Sure.
Second?
Second.
Real call.
Second in honor of Jack.
Real call, Mr. Harrington?
Mrs. Downs?
Yes.
Ms. Larmour?
Yes.
Mrs. Eubank?
Yes.
Mr. Pullman?
Yes.
Mr. Bennington?
Yes.
Well, thank you very much for attending, and have a great day. Motion is accepted and meeting adjourned.